...who is in attendance along with former councillor and member of the committee, Special Awards Advisory Committee, Sam Lamb to make the presentation. I could have you come up. But this young community member is actually involved in one of his pursuits in just a few moments' time, so perhaps we take the opportunity to reflect on his accomplishments right now.
I guess that's working. Mayor Steve, CEO, members of council, and guests. It is my pleasure to call up Jayden King for the Volunteer of the Month of May. So Jayden, would you like to come up, please? I hope this doesn't take too long, Mr. Mayor, because I've got about six pages here. In 2016, Jayden was volunteered with the Tilsonburg Minor Ball Club by preparing the diamonds before and after the games, as well as he assists in running annual program such as Pitch Hit and Run Event. Jayden has had great success as a curling player. Along with the athletics, he has received numerous awards for academics in math, as well as awards in science and physical education. He has been playing Tilsonburg Minor Ball since 2006. At Glendale High School, he participates in volleyball, baseball, badminton, curling, and intramural teams. He volunteers at the school pancake breakfast. In September 215, June 216, he painted pumpkins and sang for residents of Carrasick Care Nursing Home in Carlin. Guess you're a singer, too, eh, Jayden?
We'll see you in a minute.
And Jayden is a friendly and polite individual who changes his sociality stereotype about teenagers. He is very motivated and remains an enthusiastic volunteer with numerous community organizations. Jayden is a respectful teammate that is a good role model for fellow peers, classmates, and younger students. Congratulations, Jayden. Now, if the mayor will assist me in the presentation, I'll...
Congratulations, Jayden. That's very exciting. I would ask here, maybe you present that Volunteer of the Month pin to Jayden, and then we'll see him get there, and we'll have Jayden in the middle. And we'll get... We're going to get a shot.
There you go, Sam.
This is... We've had a wonderful history of volunteerism in our community, and a lot of times, the recommendations and nominations that have come forward, a lot of faces are in this room. I've got a former Citizen of the Year of the Town of Tilsonburg who made the presentation. But it's extremely wonderful, and I think it sets our future as a community, and quite frankly, as a nation, to know that we're going to be able to ride a bit of the coattails of people like Jayden for years to come. So congratulations and thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much. Another year ahead of us. Congratulations, young fellow here. Hope you...
Can't have the pen.
Hope you can help... Hope you can help the Blue Jays someday.
Thank you very much.
We will now move to the public meeting portion of our agenda. Councillor Hayes, you have a resolution to move into Committee of Adjustment, please.
Moved by Hayes, seconded by Councillor Roseheart. The council moved into the Committee of Adjustment to hear applications for minor variance.
Thank you, Councillor Hayes. Discussion for members of council. All those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Our first application for minor variance is an application for rear yard minimum depths to be reduced from the required yard distance of 39.3 feet to 29.5 feet to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling with an attached garage, and the property is at 134 Allen Street in Tilsonburg. Mr. Gilbert, you're here to make comment, please.
Thank you. This is a variance application to reduce the rear yard depth from 12 meters to nine meters. The applicant has indicated this request was made to accommodate a single detached dwelling with greater floor area for wheelchair accessibility. The applicant was circulated for comments, and no adverse comments were received. The remaining rear yard depth is similar to other properties in the area and will still maintain sufficient area for lot grading, drainage, and amenity area. As such, planning staff recommend approval subject to the noted condition.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilbert, are there questions to the application from members of council, please? Seeing none, just to the general public, this is a public meeting held under the Planning Act for the purposes... This is a public meeting for the purposes of hearing. Minor variance application A-0818. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to make a presentation to council. If anyone who appeals this decision has not provided council with oral or written submissions at the public meeting, then the local planning appeal tribunal, formerly known as the Ontario Municipal Board, has the power to dismiss the appeal. I'd ask, is the attendant or representative of the applicant, excuse me, in attendance this evening, would you like to make presentation?
In favor.
Would you just like... Perhaps you could come up, state your name, and then if you're in concurrence with the conditions, then that's an important part of the process.
I'm Nathan Cook. I'm acting on behalf for the owners, and the goal of this home was to accommodate wheelchair accessibility, so...
Very good.
That's about it.
If you could just... Is there any questions for Mr. Cook, for members of council? Just have you sign that sheet there and appreciate it.
Done.
Oh, very good. I would also ask, then, is there anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of the application? I'd also ask if there's anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in opposition, or has any general questions regarding the application? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Councillor Hayes, do you have a resolution, please?
Yes, I do. Moved by Hayes, seconded by Councillor Roseheart. The Tilsonburg Committee of Adjustment approved application file A-0818, submitted by Nathan Cook on behalf of Sean and Michelle Gaitens for lands described as Park Lots 18 and 19, Plan 41M-147, and Part 18, Plan 41R-6720, and Parts 15 and 16, Plan 41R-6737, in the Town of Tilsonburg, as it relates to: One, relief from Section 6.2, Zone Provisions R1, Rear Yard Minimum Depth, to reduce the required rear yard from 12 meters, which is 39.3 feet, to 9 meters, which is 29.5 feet, to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling, subject to the condition that a building permit for the proposed dwelling shall be issued with one year of the date of the committee's decision.
Thank you, Councillor Hayes. Council, discussion to the resolution, please? Seeing none, we'll call that question. All those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Council has approved minor variance application A-0818. There will be now a 20-day appeal period, and if no appeals are received, the minor variance will become final at that time. Thank you, and good luck to the applicants. Our second application for minor variance is application A-0918 by Oxford Builders Incorporated. There's two requests for relief, one being front yard minimum depth to reduce from 24.6 feet to 19.7 feet, and in the exterior side yard minimum width for... To be... Excuse me, to be reduced from 24.6 feet to 14.8 feet to provide for the construction at 150 Maple Lane in Town of Tilsonburg. Mr. Gilbert, please.
Thank you. Again, this is two variances to the construction of a proposed dwelling. The applicant has requested the relief because of the curvature of Pine Street. It does impact on the eastern part of the proposed dwelling. The application, again, was circulated for comments, and no adverse comments were received. There's not expected to be any impact on sightlines or traffic safety, and the front yard depth will still accommodate one private... One vehicle on private property in the driveway. The relief isn't expected to impact any other lot grading or drainage concerns, so as such, planning staff recommend approval subject to the noted condition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilbert. Are there questions for the planner from members of council, please? Seeing none, is the applicant or representative for the applicant in attendance this evening? Then I would ask if there's anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of the application? I'd also ask if there's anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in opposition to the application, or has any general questions there? Seeing none, Deputy Mayor, you have a resolution, please?
I do, sir. It's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Adam. The Tilsonburg Committee of Adjustment approved application file A-0918, submitted by Oxford Builders Incorporated, 2340764OntarioIncorporated, for lands described as Lot 19, 41M, Plan 229, Town of Tilsonburg, as it relates to: Number one, relief from Section 7.2, Zone Provisions R2, front yard minimum depth to reduce the required front yard depth from 7.5 meters to 6 meters; and number two, relief from Section 7.2, Zone Provisions R2, exterior side yard minimum width to reduce the required exterior side yard width from 7.5 meters to 4.5 meters, to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling, subject to the condition that a building permit for the proposed dwelling shall be issued within one year of the date of the committee's decision.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council, you've heard the resolution, discussion? Seeing none, we'll call that question. All those in favor, opposed, the resolution is carried. Similar to the last minor variance approval, there will be a 20-day appeal period. If no appeals have been registered within that period, the decision of council will be final and binding, so good luck to the applicant in their construction as well. There are no other planning applications this evening. Deputy Mayor, do you have a resolution to move us out of Committee of Adjustment and back into council as a whole?
I certainly do. It's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Adam. The council moved out of Committee of Adjustment and moved back into regular council session.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Discussion. All those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Thank you. Thank you, council. We'll move further to Section 8 of our agenda, Delegations and Presentations. At this point in time, I'd call upon Cindy Allen. Cindy, in attendance? Thank you very much, and I understand there is a PowerPoint presentation as well. So thanks very much for being here, and I look forward to your presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you. We are here today to speak about some of the issues that are affecting us on Langrell Avenue. We have been told by town employees from going to the Lizgar office that these issues are being held up by council not approving them. So we're here today to directly ask you why these projects are not going... Why these projects, sorry, are not being approved, and when should we expect some resolution to these issues? So on our agenda today, we have the final road surfacing on Langrell, we have sidewalks, green space, the light pollution bylaw, and residents have questions for council pertaining to these, these issues on our agenda. So with the road surfacing, this... Our road on Langrell is in very bad shape. As you can see in the picture, the road surface is deteriorating, there's water that puddles and freezes, especially by the road drains. Some road drains are higher than the actual road surface. We understand that this is because the intention was to have the final road surface put in, and then the drains would work properly. However, we've been waiting for over five years to have the road surface completed, so these drains are ineffective and causing other issues. So there's constant potholes, and in the preceding pictures, you'll see the condition of the road, where the potholes are in the same area, and that there's new road deterioration starting. So the problem with fixing the current potholes is that the base of the road is in such poor shape that no matter what you put on it, it's just going to come up, and this is our road today. So there's concerns from residents around damage to their vehicles, hitting the corners of these raised curbs and sewer grades. A lot of people have broken curbs that are entering their driveways, so they have to go over these every day. The road is the only option for us to walk on because we do not have sidewalks, so we are looking at the standard of the road and the road maintenance done by the Town of Tilsonburg. Also, we've heard over the years that because there were undeveloped lots on Langrell, that's what the holdup was. Well, we've been at 75% to 80% completion and occupancy on Langrell for quite some time, and this service really needs to be completed. So here are some of the pictures of our road. You can see in the picture on the right, that one has been fixed quite a few times, and it actually just looks like a dirt road. So more pictures, the darkening, you can see the problems that are starting, more deep potholes that are starting in new areas. Curbs, again, like I was speaking about, they're broken. People have several inches that they have to go over from the road to the curb in order to enter their driveways. Some of these are in really bad shape. And if you look at Langrell, there are some markings around some of the broken curbs, so it appears that there was an intention to fix them at some point, but it just has not been done. Again, here are pictures of the sewer grades that are higher than the road surface. The picture on the left, you can see that the corner's been taken off a few times, and we've all heard the snowplow hit it in the winter. So just in terms of getting the road water off the surface, these are inadequate systems, and they need to be addressed. Right here, the angle's a little bit bad, however, you can see that the road grade is the highest point on that road. So when we receive high rain levels, where is that water going? It's not going anywhere. It's sitting on the road, and in the winter, it becomes a huge mess. This here is a picture taken right by the community post box on Langrell Avenue. This shows that there's a different depth to the road, and a different depth from the road to the curb. So this is a high-traffic area, so it needs to be the same level. It needs to be addressed. This is just the Town of Tilsonburg Road Maintenance Bylaw, so maintaining and upgrading roads so that they are safe for motorists and pedestrians is a priority in any municipality. So we're asking, does this meet the town's standard by looking at this road? So sidewalks. We have over 50 children that live on this street, on Langrell, so this poses a huge safety concern for the residents, the ones backing out of their driveways. There's no flow to the pedestrian traffic. If we had sidewalks, people would be walking primarily on the one side of the road. People are forced to walk on the road, which is in disrepair, because there are no sidewalks as planned for the area. Also, there is a blind corner for vehicle traffic when you're turning right off of Quarter Town Line onto Fairview, and there is, with the proposed sidewalks, that would control the pedestrian traffic on the other side of the road, so that would help. So here is a picture of the corner of Quarter Town Line. This, just to the left of the first picture on the left, is actually the other community post... Community mailbox on Fairview. So this is a high-traffic area as well for vehicle and pedestrian traffic. So the one with the fire hydrant is coming off of Quarter Town Line onto Fairview. If there is somebody behind those bushes, you can't see them until you're almost on top of them. So this is a huge issue for a lot of us. The green space. So currently, in the pictures preceding this slide, you'll see the pictures of the dirt pile that we're going to refer to. It has weeds over the eight-inch maximum allowed by the Town of Tilsonburg. The weeds include an abundance of ragweed, which a lot of people are allergic to. So the dirt pile is also interrupting because of the size and where it's located. A lot of us have fences on the back of our properties, so there's not enough room after a heavy rainfall for all of the water to get out. And so after a really bad rainfall, we do end up having a lot of water in our backyards right around that fence line, because it doesn't have anywhere properly to go, so it's interrupting the natural drainage. Also, it's home to wildlife and several variety of... Varieties of birds, and so a lot of us are having a lot of problems with birds, trying to nest in our eaves troughs, our barbecues, on our decks, wherever. So it's actually becoming a huge problem. With the safety equipment or fencing around the pond, we're going to address that in an upcoming slide. So this is a picture right from behind my house, and this just shows the weeds. In the next couple weeks, this will be completely yellow with ragweed. So we really need to have that addressed. This picture here, it's hard to tell because of the picture, but there are trees, small trees, growing out of this green space because it has been left and not maintained for so long. So we do have the Town of Tilsonburg fill bylaw, so that no fill shall be allowed to remain in an unlevelled state for no longer than 14 days unless there's a building permit. Our understanding is that this is not going to be a piece of land that's going to be built on. This is obviously a pile of fill. One of the mounds of dirt is actually from foundations of some of our houses, so we just want to know what is going to be done with this. And then also, too, Section 9 states that no fill shall be left in an uncovered state, not covered by sod, seed, or agricultural crop on any property for no longer than 30 days. And then the stipulations as well. So this is the vacant land one, so it needs to be graded, filled, or otherwise drained to prevent recurring ponding of water, and that it needs to be maintained, and it's obviously not being maintained. So with the pond safety, through talking to a lot of our neighbors, the pond safety came up quite a bit. This area is used a lot, not only by residents on our street, but also from residents in the community that like to fish in the area, that like to walk around the pond. So because of the muddy bottom of the pond's surface, people are concerned, and they're just wondering, hey, we understand, under the current bylaw, there doesn't require a fencing or any safety equipment, but can we be proactive with the 50 kids that live in the area, the amount of use this area gets? Can we just put in some safety equipment? So this one is about light pollution. There's a huge issue with the stoffler lights, and they're not pointing downward, like the exterior bylaw for lighting states. The lights are blinding, and people are dealing with layers of window coverings trying to cope with keeping the light out of their bedrooms when they're trying to sleep. So the stoffler lights affect Langrell residents on all part of the street. So you would think it would just be the houses on Langrell around the corner that are affected by this. I am at the other end of the street, one of the pictures I'm taking from my back deck, and I'm quite some distance, I'm by the pump house. That's where I live. So there is no reason why the lights from stofflers need to come down my end of the street. Also, from talking to residents, that people on the other side of the street are dealing with the lights coming into the fronts of their houses as well. So with the proposal of a new car dealership... Another car dealership coming in, we want to make sure that the bylaws are followed. So the first one on the left is actually the Sobies Pioneer Plaza, and the pictures here are taken from one of the corner houses on Langrell, and on the right is what they deal with on the other side of their property, to the left of their property, from stofflers. So this is coming straight into the back of their house. We do have a few residents here that live in that corner, so if you have any questions, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to address those. This is from my house, which is down by the pond house, and these come into the back of my house. From this picture, you can obviously see that they're not pointing down, and it's part of the bylaw that they need to be pointing down, and they should not, as point number four says, that they are directed downward and deflected away from the adjacent lots. They clearly are not. So what we want is the bylaw to be followed up, and we would like someone to have the conversation with stofflers and to get these things corrected. So the last point here is the Langrell-Trillium intersection. So any of us that have tried to make a left-hand turn onto Langrell when somebody else is trying to make a left on Trillium knows how difficult that can be. The intersections don't line up, so that causes a problem just to make the left turns to begin with. There's a lot of walking traffic because of the school zone, so this is an area, especially with the 64 new developments, 64 new units going in just down the road, how are we going to ensure that this does not become a problem intersection, knowing what we know today? And also, too, we have noticed that there is a proposal put in for four new pedestrian crossovers on Quarter Town Line, so nobody seems to know what this is about, so we're curious to see if maybe this will help our problem with the traffic in that intersection. So this is actually the intersection of Quarter Town Line and Langrell. The problem with this picture, there's a couple things. One is the height and road difference, so when you come into Langrell, coming off of Quarter Town Line, there is quite a bit of a lip there, so it needs to be addressed. So our questions for council are, when can we expect some answers on what's going on with Langrell? Is there a lawsuit? Is there a legal dispute with the development agreement? What's going on, and when is this going to be resolved? How will this be done, and who do we follow up with? And what is the complaint process? We are looking for action today. We're not waiting for another five years for a study. We're not waiting. We want tenders out. We want these things to be addressed. We have been quite patient. We're here as a group, and we want some answers, and we want to know, who do we talk to? And that's about it for us. Sorry, there is one piece of information that I received, and it's actually the approved... The planned proposal that includes the sidewalks for Fairview and Langrell, and with the green space behind us. So this was approved, it's all part of the planning. It's... Everything has been done, except for the money has not been released for these projects to be completed. This has been given to me from one of the longest residents on the street, and many of us, when we bought our houses, were told that it was going to be a green space on... Behind us, and that the sidewalks were going on a specific side of the road. So we're just wondering where all those things are. Thank you.
All right, just making... Oh, no. Cindy, very good. I just want you... The last point, I wanted to make sure I was writing notes, and I wanted to make sure I caught that as well. Excuse me. Thanks very much. That was extremely well done.
Thank you.
I know you don't need to hear that, but it was actually very well done and informative. Excuse me. Questions from... You know, entertaining questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, please.
If I could start, thanks for your proposal or your presentation.
Thank you.
Sometimes we need a little nudge to see what the concerns are in the community, and I've had the privilege of driving through there a couple of times on the weekend and looking at the concerns. Would you clarify something for me, though?
Sure.
About the pond? And you say some safety devices. Are you talking about a full fence around the pond? Or what... Would you define what safety devices you can envision around that pond that perhaps most of the neighbors would agree with?
So what we would be looking for is one of those poles with a preserver, just in the event that somebody gets stuck into the water. We can try to help them out without getting ourselves stuck in the muddy bottom. We would be pretty satisfied, I think, as a delegation with that proposal for safety.
So you're not looking for a complete fence around the whole thing?
No, I don't think we'd be looking for a complete fence whatsoever.
Right. That could be rough, because if wildlife gets in, it can't get out.
Well, that's it, and we do have some geese that like to frequent the area there, so...
Okay, all right. No, thank you.
Further questions for members of council? Councillor Adam, please.
Thanks, Mayor, through to Cindy. Thanks again, as Deputy Mayor said, for your presentation. Don't have too many questions. We will have questions for staff, and I don't... Not to preamble any discussions that'll take force here, but I don't think you'll have maybe the answers that you want, but I see that the resolution speaks to getting a town staff report and getting more information at a... At a date to be determined. But just around your presentation, you're saying, you know, whether this is the town's standards, and I would answer absolutely not the town's standards. Out of the issues that you outlined, I recall hearing a few years ago, going around Langrell about the road, but first I've heard about the other issues, and it's clear with the mound of dirt there that there was some enforcement issues, because I was quite surprised to see that there was a few, just a few weeks, that something like that should be standing there. So I think there's a problem around enforcement a few... So, I think there's a problem around enforcement a few years ago, or whenever that was, but, um, hopefully we can get some more answers, uh, after the presentation from staff, or get back to you in a short timeframe.
There should be a lot of record, because not only myself, but a lot of the residents here have called in and made sure that everything was logged. So, there's just some sort of disconnect from the complaints or concerns that we've lodged at that office and getting to here. So, there's some sort of disconnect that way.
And through the mayor, I do recall in your presentation, it was, uh, it was questioned about the, the proper process for constructive criticism or complaints. And so, you're telling council that you've, you've gone through the ACR process, uh, logging complaints. That was going to be one of the suggestions I have, you hadn't done that. But you, you physically been into the office and submitted?
Me personally, I have not physically been in the office to address this, however, some of the neighbors have. And what the frustration really came down to was the difference in stories that we were all getting. Some of us were saying that it's because there's one undeveloped lot, it's never going to happen until that lot's developed. Sometimes we hear, well, there's a development agreement dispute between the town and the developer, and so it's going to be held up in court. We've heard so many different stories, and that's why we're here today, is because we don't want to hear the rumors, we want to hear the straight goods. We want to know what is happening with our street. Is there a legal dispute that's going on? Is that why we're being affected? We just need more straight answers. We need a point person that we can go to, so we can get those straight answers.
Thank you, have some questions later.
Further, um, council Russell time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you then, maybe to, um, Mr. DeLebacke. Can I do this?
Realize there is a resolution coming to the floor.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, to kind of clarify though, if the subdivision developer in the subdivision agreement is the one that's responsible for paving the road and the, uh, the sidewalks and the curbs and all that sort of thing, and when, when then was this, uh, subdivision developed originally? Now, you say you've been waiting five years, so presumably the houses have been there longer than five years. Two thousand and seven, so?
Some, some people have been, been here for eleven years.
Right.
Um, and I think to meet that seventy-five, eighty percent occupancy, that would have been about five, six years ago.
Okay.
When I moved three years ago, there was only, one, two, three, four, five, five builds after me.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Well, I'm going to assume then that the subdivision agreement, that it would have been the developer's responsibility to, to do these things. And I just wondered, does the town have, um, like, would they inspect, for lack of a better word, these, these things when they're done before, um, before they're, they're given the go-ahead that this is okay? Or are they just kind of whatever the developer does is satisfactory?
I'll go through, and then I'll have a comment, and I want to ensure that you and your, and that a lot of the neighbors, and thank you for your attendance as well, will get the same information. Mr. DeLebacke, are you able to assist with that?
Uh, through to council Russell time, yes, the town staff inspect, um, and yes, this is an obligation of the developer.
So, this, this, this work would have been inspected at the time that the area was developed? Um.
Reminding all the council of a public, um, report of January of this year.
Yes.
Where, uh, prioritization of developments, uh, authored by Mr. DeLebacke. Three developments inside the community, Woodhaven subdivision, um, which there's been some subsequent activity on, or direction, um, the two thousand and four North Park phase one, which is Langrel Ave., and then actually the Lynx, uh, Fairway slash Green, uh, Eagles, where there are deficiencies, um, many of them highlighted in your presentation tonight, and a financial deficiency, um, from the developer to complete those. So, I think that's part of the process, and the answer is, how do you balance the demands and expectations and reality of expectations, um, with the financial, um, encumbrance of the developer? Because all of these things, as mentioned, outside of the lights, and I could be, I've made a lot of notes, um, are really subdivision agreement responsibilities. But there comes a time, and I think, uh, stealing your, that's, it addresses that. You continue, sorry.
Okay. No, that, that sort of addresses what I, and also, not so long ago, at a council meeting, we reviewed, uh, the sidewalk, uh, conditions throughout the town in a report, again, from Mr. DeLebacke, and, um, identified places where sidewalks need to be put in. So, certainly if this doesn't get done through your appeal, um, to the town about the developer, um, it, it certainly would probably be on the agenda at some point, uh, not too far away, because it would have been identified as an area needing sidewalks. So, um, thank you.
For councillor Hayes, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To Cindy, thanks for your excellent presentation. And we had a nice visit yesterday, talked to you and your husband on, on site, and we did talk a little bit about that big berm of dirt, and I don't know whether you've had any more consideration on that, because my thoughts yesterday were, yesterday were, maybe if it was all removed, you would have a lot more sound and traffic noise, and it is a sound barrier. But definitely it does need cleaning up. I mean, by the pictures, there's trees have been growing up on there, so it's, it's been there a long time, but I didn't know whether you've had any more thoughts of, uh, certainly the drainage could be improved behind the fence, but as far as removing that pile of dirt, I'm concerned it could be more noise problems.
There could be. Um, most of us have spoken about keeping that berm behind. The only thing is, what does that look like in terms of the end product? Is it going to be a sliding hill? When that dirt pile was not covered in trees and weeds, we found that a lot of people would bring their RC cars to the top, kids would slide down the hills. So, there's a concern from our end on really what the end result would look like, and how it's going to be maintained from that end. But I think for, for the most of us, we definitely want to keep something as a sound barrier back there, but also with the car dealership behind that, you know, there's going to be some, um, not erosion, but some, some grading issues.
It could be maintained and leave foliage and growth on it, not cut it right down to bare, but at least keep it, cut down, that there's still a good grass structure on it.
And, and I think.
Would keep the erosion down.
I think there's only one neighbor that doesn't back on to that right now, that is not here, but for the most of us, we, we want to keep something back there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Do you have anything councillor, um, Rosehart? You're okay. Um, so, just a couple of things, uh, and again, Cindy, thanks very much. Um, in general, because it was a well-organized, and the structure of your presentation, uh, there, we used as a fairly straightforward matrix, like, yes, no, check off, that, you know, I think there's some good measurables there. Um, I think as referenced very briefly in, um, in question that councillor Hessel time had, this is an operational memo. Uh, North Park Langrel's, uh, base asphalt repairs, you've highlighted, I know from my drives there. I do know some people in the area, too. Uh, surface asphalt, which ultimately is only as efficient as the base asphalt, sidewalks, gutter and storm repairs, uh, complete park lot and topsoil pile removal. That's what the town has been able to identify. You've been, you've highlighted a couple of additional things.
Right.
Some that are, I would suggest, are part of the original site plan and expectation, some which are living with experience and now seeing, you know, either ramifications or that, in one case, lighting, this, uh, lighting bylaw may not be, um, being respected. Those are my words, but I think I'm interpreting your concerns.
Yep, absolutely.
And those are your neighbors appropriately. In, in, without going through all of those, because I would concur, you know, we, you can drive and, or just be a neighbor, or spend time there, and you'll know that these are deficiencies, and we accepted a report just earlier this year that, that highlighted a number of them. But in your presentation, and I'm going to say, separating the lights, because they're really off-site.
Mm-hmm.
Although they, unless they are in a, the site plan agreement. Purchase a property, build a house, recognize from the builder and the terms and conditions of the zoning and, and the site plan agreement. If the site, original site plan agreement that you, and I'm asking you, because you're the one speaking, um, were adhered to, would you be satisfied as that being the, that's the conditions that you bought into? In essence, you're comfortable that, in your expectations to be in that neighborhood?
So, so what you're saying is, if we had bought it with the expectation that this is as good as it gets?
No, no.
Would we be happy with that?
No, no. If it's finished.
If it's finished.
The way you interpret it, which I'm going to say, I concur, but I've.
Yep.
You've done far more research, right? I don't have the, the, the buy, the, um, plan of subdivision, or draft plan of subdivision in front of me. So, I'm saying, if everything was done, the way that we sign an agreement in good faith with a developer, so that the developer does, then we take, when we assumed the road, that's not our road right now. That's part of the issue here. But if everything was done to, to the satisfaction, you'd be happy? I, I'm talk, I, I'd be, had, you'd be comfortable in, with that resolution?
So, part of it is, um, when, when is it going to be done?
I, I can't hear you, Cindy, I'm sorry.
So, so, so when would it be done? And that's what it comes down to, because what we're being told is that there's money set aside in order to address these issues, but there's a reluctance in order to release those funds.
That's, I got to say that that's not correct. I think what's.
So, then when is?
I can pretty well say that there's not sufficient funds.
Okay.
To do all the work that was supposed to be done. And that's a developer's issue. This presentation tonight is highlighting this in a more comprehensive fashion, and our expectation is that staff's going to come back with a, how do we accommodate the expectations of our, members of our community?
I think part of.
And if that was done, you'd be satisfied.
Well, part of it, it comes down to the town's responsibility in this whole debacle. And quite frankly, maybe what you have in your development agreements isn't, isn't, um, a deterrent enough for these developers to high-tail and take off from Tilsenberg, because this isn't the first case up in, in the South Ridge Development. There was another one that the developer high-tailed and ran, and that's why there was all those water issues up there. So, this isn't the first time. So, from a delegation's perspective, what is the town of Tilsenberg doing to prevent this from happening again? So, it's, it's almost a.
Well, I think that's the encouraging part.
So, there's two parts.
This council's taken, has, this, this information unfortunately has, through, uh, Mr. DeLebacke, bringing this to, this council's attention, has made, you know, significant changes upon the expectations of, of the new developers in this community. That doesn't, that same forward thinking doesn't assist you. I guess, if you got what you think you, all of this, that's the environment that you'd be happy living in.
We would be happy to have the services as promised, absolutely.
So, that's why I want our senior leadership team to hear that, so that when they bring back a report, they know what the expectations are.
And I think the, the real clincher for us is the timeframe, because we've been waiting for long. Um, this is part of our formality, coming to council to address these issues. However, this isn't, isn't all of our planning. We do have a Plan B, that if this doesn't get approved, that we would exercise in order to get our road finished. So, we're coming here in good faith, and we're hoping that, obviously, everyone knows the condition of our street. So, it's really about when the funds are going to be released, and when we're going to start seeing some movement on Langrel. We want to see some sidewalks, we want dates. We don't want to get bombarded with, it's going to happen again. We also know that this is an election year for council in, in Tilsenberg. So, is this issue going to be dropped if the council changes in October? So, we have a lot of legitimate issues that we want to have some assurances to.
Excellent. Any further questions for members of council? Uh, there's a resolution, I believe councillor Adam, you have that resolution, please?
Move by myself, seconded by councillor Russell time, the council receives the delegation on neighborhood concerns, uh, Langrel Avenue is information, and that the matter be referred to staff for review. Thanks, mayor.
Might need a little meat, but go ahead.
Well, yeah, I just think that we're looking for.
Okay, you have the resolution, councillor. What would you like it to say?
Well, I'm looking across, uh, this is coming from Mr. DeLebacke's department. So.
Could we ask Mr. DeLebacke, based on the conversations tonight and what I think you've heard from members of council, what kind of timeframe with potential deliverables you could be bringing council, uh, this priority report?
Uh, through the mayor, through councillor Adam, I can confirm that with the staffing resources in engineering that are depleted significantly, that, uh, it's just myself, it'll take quite some time before we can get a report back to council on this issue.
What's quite some time? Sounds like an excuse. That's ridiculous. Put June twenty eighth. Drop them, I can't pay them, how's that? Well, the best option would have been the fourteenth. I don't believe even that, that's in two weeks. If it's going to be a responsible, reliable report, uh, which there is significance, you've put a lot of time into yours, I think you deserve a responsible response. I think if we can get it for the twenty eighth, you'll get.
Twenty eighth of June?
An answer that's responsible, and it's up to coun, I hear Mr. DeLebacke, I think I was referenced from the CAO, we have to provide, Mr. DeLebacke, if council is giving this, we also have to respect Mr. DeLebacke's position and ensure he has the resources available to satisfy council's expectation. Is that clear?
Resolution reads, move by myself, seconded by councillor Russell time, the council receives the delegation on neighborhood concerns, Langrel Avenue is information, and that a staff report be prepared for the second regular council meeting of June.
Thank you. Discussion for members of council. Call that question, all those in favor, post carry. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Hey, thank you.
No, sometimes it's the hard, like, you know, those are good, but you've made, your presentation, it's concise, and there's deliverables on there, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now a pleasure to welcome, um, is Sutton Deering in the room?
She is.
Where'd she go?
Come on up, son.
Well, no, no one's leaving before Sutton's.
Here, you come up here.
Hey.
Stand right here, and Julie will talk.
I'm going to welcome Julie Dolly, and actually, I'm proud of our program team at the, uh, at the pools. Um, and they're going to, throughout the summer season, bring, um, a presentation on water safety. We've had one presentation, um, through council, really out to the community as a whole. Uh, water, uh, children, but water and safety in particular, um, are something that should be at, you know, some of the first things we learn. And, um, I'll just ask Julie to carry on with this presentation.
Okay. So, I'm here tonight because we're getting close to the, well, we aren't, now it's hot, it's really hot outside. How many of you in this room have already swam in a pool? Right? It's pretty hot out. So, because of that, we wanted to make sure that our community is teaching their kids how to swim, and adults are getting out and learning how to swim. We love swimming, and we know that you're going to love it too. Right? Yes. So, one of the, but there's other reasons why you should learn to swim, other than just the obvious safety. But drowning is the second, uh, leading cause of death of people between the ages of five and twenty-four. And when kids take swimming lessons, they get a new respect for water, like, they actually know that they shouldn't go swimming alone, they learn valuable skills beyond just the fact that they know how to swim. One of the things we always tell parents is, you see kids out there, and they're always trying to swim on their front, swim on their front, swim on their front. And one of the big things we learn is how to swim on our backs, because if you ever fell in a pool, and mom and dad weren't around, what would you do if it was too far for you to swim? You could float on your back, and you can breathe for a long time on your back. So, that's why floating and learning to swim on your back is so important, right? How far can you swim on your back? Four, four widths, right? With Julie's help? But halfway across that pool on her own, and she's only four. So, she's going to be a safe little swimmer, aren't you? Yeah. Yeah. One of the other benefits is physical health. It's obvious that physical fitness can be achieved through swimming, and anybody can do it. So, we can start off with babies right from three months old, right up to seniors. And people are achieving great physical benefits from swimming. And we're pretty fit, aren't we? Yeah. We love swimming. Next is emotional health. So, we can encourage your children to swim, and also improve their mental and emotional health through natural buoyancy of the water. Lots of kids with, um, you know, uh, problems in life, where they have, uh, A H E D, or or they have some sort of learning problem, could come to the pool, and they float, and that's very calming, calming environment for them, and they see real benefits through that. So, you know, not only are they learning to swim, but there could be some real benefits for those kids who are struggling in life. And last, we want everyone to make their child a swimmer. Just because then we know if someone falls in, if your child gets pushed into the pool, or if they're out in the lake, and they end up in an undertow, they're gonna know what to do. So, I did bring Ms. Sutton to answer some questions. So, she's going to tell you, because I can tell you all kinds of things about swimming, but let's hear it from the kids who are actually taking it. So, can you come over here, sweetie, and face this way, so they can hear you really good? Okay. Do you want me to take it out?
You can, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, I don't wanna pull on that. But you said you were gonna talk really loud, right? Are you gonna talk loud?
Just twice, no.
Now, just leave it, she'll be fine. All right. Sutton, can you tell everyone, how old are you? Can you say it?
Four.
Ha ha! And when did you start swimming? Hold that up big, like this. Hold it up big, how many is that? There we go. You say two.
Two.
So, she was two years old when she started. And you've been coming, who do you, who teaches you how to swim?
Julie.
And, do I love it? Yes, I do. And what was it like the first time you went under the water?
Nice.
It was what?
Nice.
It was nice. So, it wasn't scary?
No.
No, we had fun, didn't we? What's your favorite thing about swimming?
Um, jumping in.
Mine too. And she's really good at that. There was a time where you wouldn't jump in by yourself, right? I would catch you, but now, do you jump all by yourself? And can you get back to the wall by yourself? Yes, you can. And do you think everyone should learn how to swim? And why?
Because that's good.
Yes, it is good. Everybody should learn to swim, that's right. And would you ever go in the water by yourself?
No.
No. Who has to be with you?
Mommy's and daddy.
That's right. Always, always within arm's reach. And do you think, when you grow up, and you're really a big girl, will you be a lifeguard and teach swimming lessons to you, just like Julie? Yeah? I thought you might, so I brought you a little present. So, you can open it up. Show everybody what's in there. Pull it there. Just throw it up. What is that? This is like her first official lifeguard bathing suit. Show everybody, so that you can wear that and be a speedo swimmer. And there's something else. And a bathing cap, because when you get really serious about swimming, you gotta tear her out of her eyes, right? Right? Can you show everybody, thank you for having me?
Thank you for having me.
Any questions, though, about learning to swim? Perhaps there's some of you that might wanna learn to swim. Starting the month of June, for every Thursday night from four to six, we're actually running a new adult swim time, but also adult drop-in swimming lessons. So, you can just stop in, so you can make it one Thursday, you come. You can't make it the next Thursday, it's okay. And we'll work with you and try to help you get through that. She had to leave, she, I think she was really tired, too. But we'd love to teach anybody to swim.
Are there questions for Julie at this point in time? Just, I'm sure that online at Tilsenberg Gazié, and you go to the recs programs, all of that's available, along with a reminder that water safety, whether it's in and around a pool, Lake Lidsger, the Otter Creek, or anywhere, safety is priority one.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
I believe there's a resolution, Councilor Adam? Do you have a resolution regarding the presentation as made by Sutton Deering on Water Smart message?
I do, Mayor, it's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Esseltine. The council receives the Water Smart message as information.
Excellent. Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Good night. It's a pleasure to welcome back to the chamber representatives from the Tilsenberg Senior Center. This evening, Nancy Bouten, as General Manager, reposition. And I know she's joined by board members and other interested parties from the local center, is here to make a presentation regarding the memorandum of understanding, so welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Molnar, and members of council, and thank you for having me back again tonight. It's nice to be here. I'd just like to take a very brief moment to introduce the rest of the delegation who's here with me tonight. Karen Smith is the Vice President of our Board of Directors. We also have Carlton Ross, our Treasurer, and Tony Keels as well, who's one of our directors. And of course, you know me. We're here tonight to talk about our memorandum of understanding, which was drafted between the town and the senior center in 2011, and which essentially forms the blueprint for our business relationship with the town. As you as councillors well know, it's important to revisit these documents periodically to ensure that their general intent is still valid, that parties, all parties' interests are accurately represented, and that they reflect current business practices. A committee of our board began this process some time ago, and previous to this evening, we sent you a copy of our memorandum of understanding with our proposed changes outlined in red. Now, I'm not gonna go through all of the proposed changes, because many are just minor housekeeping or semantics issues that are being suggested in order to bring the document up to date with our current business practices with the town. However, there are two proposed changes that I would like to highlight. The first of these relates to the recent move by the town away from the Class software system. Up to now, Class has been provided by the town to the senior center free of charge. And as a matter of fact, provision of Class was a point that was mandated in our memorandum of understanding. However, with Class no longer supported by the manufacturer and the town no longer using it, the senior center had to find another option. And after evaluating various options, they decided to contract with Legend Software, which is the same company currently being used by the town. The senior center has paid the upfront cost of the system, which is an expenditure of about $5,800 to this point. But we are requesting some additional assistance with ongoing licensing costs via an amendment to our memorandum. At present, the town has agreed to fund the cost of two concurrent Legend licenses for one year, and a single Legend license for a second year. And we are very, very appreciative of that fact. However, our board would like to ask council to consider amending the M O U to include ongoing financial support for two concurrent Legend licenses in lieu of providing us with Class software, as has been the past practice. At present, monthly Legend licensing fees are $358 a month, plus H S T, with prices subject to change at the company's discretion. This proposed amendment you will find in Section 1E of our memorandum. The second proposed amendment that we're asking council to consider this evening relates to the amount of grant funding transferred to the senior center by the town annually. By way of background, the M O U specifies that the town applies for and administers the grant we receive each year. It's now called the Senior's Active Living Centers Grant. Formerly, you may have known it as the E P C Grant. Annually, the town receives $42,700, of which $31,000 is transferred onto the senior center in quarterly installments, with the balance, $11,700, being retained by the town to offset things such as maintenance, utilities, and so on. Neither the amount of the grant, nor the portion of the grant that's been transferred to the senior center has changed since the M O U was signed in 2011. As you all very well can attest to, though, the cost of doing business does go up every year. Everything from basic office and programming supplies to wages, audit, and insurance fees has increased. To deal with those increases, we've undertaken a variety of measures, including seeking out competitive and bulk pricing initiatives, hosting fundraisers, increasing our user fees, membership dues, and rental rates, making efforts to attract new renters and new members. Despite our best efforts, however, we did close out 2017 with a small deficit of $4,719, and we are projecting a deficit of approximately $6,500 for 2018. We do want to assure council that all spending decisions we make at the senior center have been and will continue to be made with fiscal responsibility in mind. But we feel that, given the value that our organization adds to the town, it would be appropriate for council to consider increasing the amount of the transfer payment to the senior center, and we are seeking an increase of $3,000. This would boost our total annual transfer payment to $34,000. And just to put it into perspective, this equates to giving us $427 a year, every year, since the memorandum was signed in 2011. We do enjoy a positive working relationship with the town, and we look forward to this continuing in the future. We strive to be an asset to the town in terms of attracting seniors to the area, and we would really appreciate the town considering the aforementioned investments in our senior center via amendments to our M O U. We're, of course, this is a negotiation. We're willing to sit down and come back with you, talk, answer questions. We'd love to have all of you come through the doors if you've never been to the senior center. And if we have any questions this evening, we'll do our best to answer those for you.
Thanks very much, Nancy. I think the material as provided, and with the kinda direct asks and the references to the one current section and one proposed additional section to the M O U D is fairly straightforward, easy to understand. Are there questions from members of council for Ms. Bouten? Counselor Hayes and Counselor Rosehart, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, to Nancy. With regards to the monthly fee of $358, there's, so there's no guarantee? This isn't in place for, there's no year, two-year term on that? Or you're just, you're at their discretion if they can, they could raise that at any time?
They could.
Yeah, just, I want, well, before you leave that, those are, this is your authorship. Price is subject to change at Legend's discretion. That's your position on that, or that's?
Yes.
Because you're not, you're not directly buying the Legend's program, are you?
We, we have a contract with them for the initial setup of the software, and we pay monthly licensing fees, but they could increase those.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
I guess, just further to that, so you haven't really done any further negotiations on trying to get a guarantee of a fixed term for, you know, one or two years, so?
No.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Rosehart, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just trying to understand. So, Class was through the town of Tilsenberg?
Yes, that was a condition of the memorandum of understanding, that we would have access to that software system. And of course, that's no longer being supported by the manufacturer, which spawned the decision to go with another-
And so, you were notified that we would not be having that anymore for you as well?
Yes.
And was there anything else offered to you from us, or was there, I guess, I, sorry, through Rick maybe, but I'll ask you, was there another offer put forward to you from the town?
No, we looked into things independently, because we are an independent organization of the town.
So, you didn't really wanna be with the town anymore?
No, I didn't say that. We are an independent arms-length organization. We, we operate out of a town building, but we are, we pay our own staff, and we set our own programs, and so on and so forth. But, no, we, for the purposes of the software, we looked into other options ourself.
Good point. Counselor Esseltine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just with regard to the software then, and I agree that the $358 a month, and I guess it's times two, because you have two system, two-
No, that is the total, that is the cost for two current licenses.
In your search for other software systems, was there something less expensive that would suit your purposes?
The other main option that was explored was a custom-built system, designed sort of to fit our needs. But the, the board felt that going with an out-of-the-box, sort of tested and proven software system would be to our advantage, and also, you know, advantageous to be using the same software platform as the town as well.
Was there a significant cost difference, or are they, is that-
I believe they were both comparable when we looked at them, yeah.
Is there any particular advantage to using the same system as our Department of Parks and Recreation does? Or you act completely independently in that regard?
We are independent, and we do have, for privacy issues, you know, with members, and we do, the benefit is more in being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, have you guys had this happen? Or can you walk us through how to do this? Knowledge sharing, I guess.
Okay. Presumably, if you purchased from another company, they would, they would be your resource for knowledge sharing.
And, yes.
But you, you weren't able to find something significant, that the cost difference would be advantageous. Okay. And I just wanted to mention as well then, so the money that, that the town receives for the Senior Active Living Center Grant, you, just generally, then you get three-quarters of that. You get about the three, $3,000, and we get about $10, sort of thing. And as well, the town supports the senior center, if I think I'm quite accurate in saying, through providing your facility, through maintenance, repairs, telephone and internet, like, the town supports the senior center in many ways, in addition to that.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to, to make that clear as well. Has the senior center increased its membership fees due to the increased costs, I guess?
They have been increased over time. When I started in 2011, they were raised, they were $25. They're now $35. We've also implemented a late payment charge for members that do not renew their dues in a timely manner. The user fee has also gone up. It used to be $1.50 and $3, now it's got, it's two and four. And that's something that's always kind of being evaluated to see, you know, whether they need to go up again and by how much.
And so, over five years, so you said since 2011, you have increased, so $10 on $25 would be like roughly 30% or something like that. So, you have increased fee, but that would be over a five, six-year period, sort of thing?
Yes.
Do you, do you think that the membership would, knowing that the fee costs are going up, that the membership would be receptive to another increase in fees? Is it an annual increase?
No, it's not an annual increase. And actually, I've just been in the process of surveying other senior centers to see. Some of them do it annually, some of them do it by dollar value, some of them haven't done it in 20 years. It's, they're really quite all over the map as far as how do we, how are your fees structured, and how do they go up? Would the membership be receptive? Oh, I don't know. Nobody likes to see costs go up, let's just say that. I mean, certainly, seniors do know that there is a cost to doing business, and that things go up every year. But that said, you know, we, we like to sort of minimize the amount of impact directly on the membership as well.
And your membership has stayed firm, pretty much, in terms of numbers?
Actually, the report that you have before you was prepared quite some time ago. So, that there, I think it was 390 in the report. I just checked our, our database today, so we're at 424 right now. So, yeah, the membership is, is sitting in that 430, 450. I'm quite confident we'll be at least that by the end of the year. We were 450 at the end of 2017, so-
Okay, and you've done fundraising projects to try and increase income and things like that as well?
Yes, lots of them.
So, you're exploring out alternatives to additional money from that grant?
Yes, fundraising has actually become a lot bigger part of my job than it was when I first started.
Okay, thanks very much.
Further questions to the, for the, excuse me, for the delegation? Just a couple, couple of quick hits. There is a resolution to give direction to, you know, provide further information from the corporation's point of view. I think ultimately, these are the yes-if, it's about way, how to, you know, challenge ourselves to be inclusive and ensure that a lot of the work that you're providing and the values that you provide at the senior center, if there wasn't an autonomous, arms-length senior center, the corporation somehow through one of our programs or facilities would be doing in large part, we'd use that same message, whether it's soccer, or some other, you know, things in the community where we have valued partners, and, and we support. The system is the system, you've made those internal decisions. I don't think it's incumbent upon me to either challenge support, or anyways, that's your operational structure. But I have an interesting, I, I, did you have to manually transfer? Like, what happened to your information between Great Plains and Legends?
Okay, so Karen, who is with us tonight, she manual, she did manual data entry.
Yeah, I, so there was no opportunity for, you know, I've got my BlackBerry here, I got my, I, maybe I shouldn't ask, because it's not germane to this.
There, there was an opportunity to have it, to have Legend look after that, but I believe it carried a $1,000 price tag with it as well.
So, you're using resources?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's good. And the ask is direct, so that's good. The resolution, I believe, at least speaks to facilitating the opportunity to get further information and a potential recommendation. I'm encouraged by the numbers, even since the A G M seems like they're encouraging. The only other thing I would suggest on behalf of the relationship, it's not about needing to be in an M O U D, it's about utilizing the governance aspects of the community, our marketing, our branding, the things that we do well with other partners throughout the community, when it's making applications for funding. One thing I think we need to do a better job of collectively, I mean, that's the town, that's our partners, like a senior center, could be a sports, or recreation, or a cultural organization, is that when there are available resources, we need to be proactive as a community and dialogue internally, and assist each, you know, assist one organization so that their odds of getting funding is enhanced, rather than all competing for the same resources at a provincial or federal level against each other from, you know, a small urban community in southwestern Ontario. All good, you know, because the next time, it'll be someone else, someone else. So, I know the New Horizon program is providing- someone else, someone else. So I, I know the New Horizon program has provided value from time to time, it's not always available, but it's always, you know, either on letterhead and support a resolution, whatever it is, has been there to discuss. I think we all need to just make sure that we're doing those things as well. It's not just about the text of an MOUD. Anyways, thanks very much, and through to your members and the board who are here tonight, thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Esseltine, you have a resolution, please.
I do. Mr. Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Adam, that council receives the proposed amendments to the Tilsenberg Senior Centre memorandum of understanding and that the matter be referred to staff for review and report back to council.
Thank you, council. You've had the opportunity to accede the resolution, you've heard the delegation discussion. All those in favor, post-resolution is carried. I'm going to say that concludes our delegations this evening, but we have one more. It's a pleasure to welcome back Staff Sergeant Jennifer Horsby and the Chair of our local Police Services Board Larry Scanlon to bring the OPP's year-end support from the year 2017. So welcome to both of you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I just want to take the opportunity, Jen has been part of our community, a major part of her career. She left for about two and a half years for a sergeant's position and was fortunate enough, we were fortunate enough to get her back in Oxford as a staff sergeant now, where hopefully she will remain for the foreseeable future. So, Jen?
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here to bring greetings on behalf of Oxford Detachment and our detachment commander, Inspector Tony Hymers, and to share with you our annual report from 2017. So we'll start out with our detachment strength. Are you going to click?
You're going to, you know, that right, right arrow.
All right. So our detachment strength remains unchanged at ninety constables, eight sergeants, two staff sergeants, and one inspector, and we also have our civilian staff. In 2017, we had seven probationary constables join us at Oxford Detachment and two experienced officers who joined us from other police services. And a number of those new officers have worked in the town of Tilsenberg and are starting their policing careers here in this community. You'll see that our ride spot checks have remained relatively unchanged, and we continue to have a strong commitment to those spot checks, not just during the holiday season, but throughout the year. In 2017, we received a refund of five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for our prisoner escort refund. This is funds that comes to us from the Ministry of Corrections, and it pays for our mileage from Tilsenberg Detachment to the Elgin Middlesex Detention Centre. You will see that our alarms have gone down, which is good news, but the, the concerning number for us is that nine-one-one calls are trending upwards. And this is for us always a struggle to, to educate the public on the proper use of nine-one-one. We do attend each and every nine-one-one call. If you pocket dial, we come anyway just to make sure. So we are constantly engaged with education through our community service officer and our school resource officers who speak to young people and the students in schools, and, and more and more we're seeing this with high school students who have cell phones and, and pocket dial, that sort of thing. So it's something that we're constantly trying to message out. Provincial offence notices, this is another good news story for us. You'll see that we have increased our provincial offence notices in the town of Tilsenberg, and I think this demonstrates the commitment of our members to traffic safety. They're very engaged and it may, may, maybe it's not good for the citizens of Tilsenberg, but, but certainly the messaging out there that, that we want to have our roadway safe in the town of Tilsenberg. So our members have been very engaged in, in doing enforcement. And if we break down the, the tickets, what kinds of, of tickets officers are writing, you'll see that speeding remains the, one of our primaries, as well as plate, permit and insurance and bylaw. And that would be primarily parking, particularly during the winter months. Moving on to motor vehicle collisions, you'll see that we had a total of two hundred and sixty-four motor vehicle collisions for the entire year. You'll note that the personal injury collisions, we had twenty-nine. That can be anything from somebody saying, I have a stiff neck, but I'm not going to the hospital to have it checked, all the way up to somebody who has to be admitted to hospital. So that's, that's quite a wide range. You'll see that we had ninety-five non-reportable collisions. A non-reportable collision is a collision where the damage is under two thousand dollars. So we don't actually fill out an accident report. The individual reports it to the police and, and lets their insurance company know, but we don't actually have to fill out the report and paperwork. And if we break down the areas that we have the, the collisions, you'll see that right here at the Town Centre Mall, that's where the majority of our collisions are happening. And these, you know, these would be your PDs and your, your non-reportables, people moving in and out of parking spaces and through the mall parking lot. But that's where we're seeing the majority of our collisions. Drug crime, despite the numbers, this is actually a good news story for us. You'll see a hundred percent increase, and that can be attributed in large part to our street crimes team. This team was created in January of 2017. It's a team that focuses on property crime and drug enforcement, and they've been doing some terrific work. So I'm going to suggest to you that that double of the, the number really has to do with enforcement warrants and the like, and we've had some great success there. And we know that, that property crime goes hand in hand with, with drug crime. Some of the other initiatives that we've undertaken at Oxford Detachment is throughout 2017, we held fentanyl awareness sessions throughout the county, including here in Tilsenberg, I believe back in the fall, hosted by the Police Services Board, and we had Detective Constable Chris Ogier come in and share his experience. And they have been generally very well attended, including the one here in Tilsenberg. In addition, each of our officers have been trained on the administration of naloxone. You've probably heard a lot about that in the news, and it has been used successfully to revive individuals right here in the town of Tilsenberg. You'll see on your, the right-hand side, our 2017 intelligence-led crime abatement strategy. And just a brief explanation of crime abatement. When an individual has been involved in a violent crime, they are, and are released from bail on conditions, if they have enforceable conditions like a curfew, for instance, or non-association conditions, then we can go out and do door knocks and make sure that they're adhering to their conditions. So if an individual has a ten PM curfew, we'll go and do the door knock and make sure that they're there, and if they're not, we'll obviously take the, the proper steps. So currently, I'm sorry, in 2017, we had eight persons that we had on our abatement strategy, and we would regularly be checking in on those individuals. When you look at our, when you look at our crime statistics, you'll see that in terms of sexual assaults, the number remains relatively unchanged. Our assaults have gone down slightly. You will see that we have break-in enters and mischiefs and theft unders have gone up. And, and again, we do have a street crimes unit who are very active and, and working on solving many of those. And, and what we find with property crimes is that one individual can really have their own little crime spree going and can attribute for a number of those numbers, so, but we do have our, our street crimes unit and that's, that's their mandate. And you'll see that in 2017, we had sixty-nine reported break-in enters, and seven of those were unfounded. An unfounded break-in enter might be someone who comes home to the residence, finds their residence insecure, calls the police thinking they've been broken into. We go and clear the residence, and then they find out from a family member, they simply forgot to lock the door before they left. So actuals, we had sixty-two break-in enters. And you'll see our clearance rate is twenty-seven percent. So those are ones that we've solved. And so we're trending up again, and again, that, we can attribute that to the work of our street crimes team. And this is just a breakdown of our break-in enters. So residentially sixteen, business ten, and then sheds or buildings twenty-nine. Fraud occurrences, we had sixty in 2017, and scam-related thirty-two. And this continues to be a big issue for police services throughout Canada. And I, I don't think any one of us in this room have not had a phone call from the Canada Revenue, or purportedly the Canada Revenue Agency. And sadly, we still have some individuals who think that the Canada Revenue Agency would direct you to use iTunes gift certificates to pay for your back taxes, but unfortunately, it sadly does happen. And this is just some of the, the very common types of scams, and I'm sure many of you have heard about this. We work closely with the Canadian Anti-Fraud Centre messaging these scams out to people. Our media relations officer does a lot of work. Anytime we hear about one of these new scams, we try to get out there and message it to people. And our, our community services officer has also done some fraud awareness sessions. She did one with a, a local seniors group. So we're really trying to get the message out that you have to protect yourself, but unfortunately, sometimes people do fall victim. And I'll just draw your attention to citizen self-reporting. This is something that was started by the OPP a couple of years ago, and it's slowly starting to, to take off. It's not meant for any kind of emergency, anything that you need to see the police about now, that's not the appropriate use of this. Citizen self-reporting is meant for things like theft under, driving complaints after the fact, you know, you come home from work and half an hour ago you saw something that, that upset you on the roadway and you felt that the police needed to follow up on it. Thieves from vehicle, unlocked vehicle and, and rifled change and, and that sort of thing. So we do encourage people to use the online reporting system when it's appropriate, and it is always an officer that reviews that online reporting. And if there's further follow-up that needs to be done, then the officer does contact the individual making the complaint. And again, nine-one-one for emergencies only, that's something that we, we continue to try to, to message out to people. Our non-emergent number, this is our communication centre in London, for anyone who, who just wants to stop by the office and, and wants to see an officer and it's not emergent, we can actually put them through to the one triple-eight number. Our Tilsenberg office is open Monday through to Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, and we, we handle a number of clearance letters every day, criminal record checks for employment purposes and volunteer purposes. So it's, it's a very busy office, we have lots of traffic through on a daily basis. Any questions?
That was excellent. Questions, we'll start with the Deputy Mayor, we'll go to Counselor Hayes, and then I'll keep my, my.
Thank you very much. What about handheld devices? How are we doing with that? Are we winning?
It's an on.
Or is it, is it getting worse?
It's an ongoing battle, and we, we, the OPP actually has several initiatives throughout the years that are focused on handheld device and distracted driving. In fact, I was driving to work this morning and I passed a woman who was putting her makeup on. So sadly, some people just aren't getting the message, so we continue to do that enforcement. And actually, starting in June, we're going to be doing some joint forces stuff with Woodstock Police, and that's one of the things we're going to tackle, is distracted driving, because unfortunately, people are still doing that.
And it's causing fender benders, but I know some of the newer technologies, the cell phones that are coming out, have the switches in them, and people can self-police where they'll turn it on, and if that vehicle's moving.
Yes.
They can't use it if it's not working.
You know what, it's, it's an expensive mistake, first and foremost, in terms of safety, but also in terms of the, the fine. It's a four hundred and ninety-dollar fine. And, and you, nobody likes to hand out that kind of ticket, but if that makes people think about it the next time and it avoids somebody hitting a child on a bicycle, it needs to be done, so.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Hayes and Counselor Adam.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do you have any foot patrols?
I certainly do, sir, yeah.
Foot patrols in the town?
Yeah, I certainly do. Let me just pull those numbers up for you. So in 2017, we conducted one thousand ninety-one point two-five hours of foot patrol. It's something that, again, is an important piece of what we do. We need to get out there and be visible to the public and be accessible. And when you're walking down the street, people will come up and talk to you. And it's, you know, even going in to get a coffee, we tell our officers, don't go through the drive-through, step in, have an opportunity to talk to people, that's really important. And, you know, I know when I'm out in the community, as soon as people see a uniform, they want to talk to us. So we have nearly eleven hundred hours of foot patrol, but it's something that we, we do encourage our officers to do on a regular basis.
Well, that's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Adam, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Through to the, I'm sorry, presenter.
Staff Sergeant.
Staff Sergeant. Just a couple of questions. You referenced the table with the drug charges, and there was some, oh, possession. I, I just wondered, like, in neighbouring communities, I don't know if I'm reading the newspaper more often than the last year or two, but neighbouring communities, there's been some major, some major busts for fentanyl you referenced earlier, cocaine and some other. And these possession charges, are we, are we talking like serious drugs like that, or some more minor?
Yes.
Yeah?
Oh, yes. There, there are some, you know, what people would consider minor ones, but, but more and more we're seeing fentanyl here on the streets of Tilsenberg. And so our street crimes unit, every detachment in, in the province has a street crimes unit, and one of the things they do is they're constantly in communication, because unfortunately criminals don't understand county lines. They don't understand they're supposed to stop at Oxford County and not come in. So we do a lot of work with Norfolk County, we do a lot of work with Brant County and Elgin and our municipal policing partners, and, and because we know they're bringing it in from all sorts of places into Tilsenberg. So a, a large number of that will be fentanyl.
Right. Thank you. And the other question I had was in relation to some federal legislation that'll be changing with the cannabis or marijuana laws changing, and I, I think I asked the question last year, but I'm just asking it again for yourself and the OPP as a provincial organization. But what steps are being taken, if, if any, at this time to be able to, I, I understand there's some issues with detection, but there's some work in progress. But is there any updates on that, or how, is there any new technology strategies?
So that we're, that's something that, that has to come from the federal government. It has to be approved through the courts, which, you know, when you go down to the states, there are certain technologies that have been accepted in their courts, and we're not quite there yet here in Canada. However, we do have, you can be charged and convicted of impaired by drug, and that's based on your physicals, and we have officers who are trained, they're called drug resource officers, and they're specifically trained to, to do different tests on the individual to determine their level of intoxication. There's also a blood test that goes with it. So recognizing that that new legislation is on the horizon, last year the OPP increased the number of officers who are being trained in that. Here at Oxford Detachment, we sent four officers for that training. It's quite an extensive training that they go through. So we are preparing for it, but there's so many unknowns with it. We still haven't received messaging from the federal government as to when it's actually going to happen, so, but we are trying to prepare for it.
And thank you for addressing my question. It was specifically to do with driving, so thank you for addressing that.
Yeah.
Counselor Rosehart, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. How often are we sending people out to monitor our trails now? Are, are we doing that yet, or are we not quite there yet?
We're, well, we're not quite there yet, although it's something we're very live to. We do have two ATVs at our office, and one of our goals for this coming summer is to get those ATVs out, because we hear that there are a lot of all-terrain vehicles riding on the trails, and obviously, that's a huge concern for us. We also have bicycles at our detachment and officers who are bicycle-trained, and that's, that's a really good way to get down those trails. And so throughout the summer months, we want to get people out and, and get them on those. So it's, it's definitely a concern of ours.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thank you. And Counselor Esseltine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask about Crime Stoppers. I understand that we've changed from Holdham and Norfolk to Tilsenberg to an Oxford County Crime Stoppers?
Yes.
And I just wondered, what, is it transparent for people? Like, are there any changes in terms of people accessing Crime Stoppers or contributing, and, and how's it working with the Oxford County group?
It seems to have been a seamless transition. The Oxford and Simcoe or Norfolk one, they worked very closely together anyway. They're all using the same software. So people who want to call in to, to Crime Stoppers haven't seen any kind of difference, and it seems to be working very well. We haven't had any concerns. Yeah.
Very good. I don't think I had any questions, other than Jennifer, if you could just take councils and I believe the community's appreciation to all the men and women and to the inspector as well.
Thank you, I will.
For the efforts on a daily basis to make our community and streets safer and, you know, just be safe.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your presentation.
I, I had the pleasure of policing this community for many years as a constable, and I'm pleased to be back here in this position. It's, it's a great community, so, very invested, and we'll certainly take the concerns that you've given us tonight, and, and I'll take it back to the members, and, and we'll work on some patrols on the trails and, and we'll address those concerns for you. Take care.
And Mr. Scanlon, please extend the, no, there's a lot of effort that goes on at the operational. the operational meetings of the, or the governance meetings, I should be more particular, at the Police Services Board. And one thing I would share with members of the community, including council, is the dedication of the members of the PSB in training, and knowing that they are a leader in their zone and across the southwestern Ontario, on, kind of, just being at that leading edge of the knowledge base, and ensuring that items that are coming from the Ministry of Correctional Services, community safety, and policing in general are being adhered to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Esseltine, you have that resolution, please.
I do, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Adam, that council receives the 2017 OPP year-end report as information.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion for members of council? Call the question, all those in favour, posed, resolutions carried. Thanks again. There are two informational items on our agenda this evening. One is a notice of a public information centre facilitated in partnership between the town and the county on the Trans-Canada Trail Extension. That meeting is being held Thursday, May 31, 2018, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the, at Anandale National Historic Site, historic site, excuse me, upstairs in the auditorium room. And a notice that's also been circulated, both of these have been in the local paper, Minister of Senior Affairs for the Ontario Senior Achievement Award, of course, June is seniors' month in the province of Ontario, and up until the June 15 deadline, nominees can be made from the public, and that information is online, but it's also been in the Wednesday edition of the Tilsenburg News in the Tilsenburg feature page. Councillor Rosehart, did you have a resolution regarding those two items, please?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hayes, that council receive agenda item 101 and 102 as information. Thank you.
Excellent. Discussion, all those in favour, posed, carried. We'll move to departmental reports. Councillor Rosehart, you have a resolution regarding a Joint Compliance Audit Committee. This is regarding municipal action.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hayes, that council receive report CL 18-20, Joint Compliance Audits and Committee, and that bylaw to appoint a Joint Compliance Audit Committee be brought forward for council's consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Discussion, all those in favour, posed, that resolution is carried. Under Finance Department, councillor Hayes, a resolution regarding the agreement to receive the funds for the Ontario Main Street Revitalisation Initiative.
Moved by Hayes, seconded by councillor Rosehart, the council receives report FIN 18-16, Ontario's Main Street Revitalisation Initiative, and that bylaw 4183 to authorize a municipal funding agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario for the provision of receiving funding for Ontario's Main Street Revitalisation Initiative be brought forward for council consideration.
Thank you, councillor Hayes. Discussion, this is just confirming the signature to an agreement between the province and the town, and the terms and conditions to spend the money that was received, or will be received. All those in favour, posed, carried. Thank you. Operational Services Report 1813, this is a Heavy Truck Restriction Bylaw. Councillor Hayes, you have that resolution, please?
Moved by Hayes, seconded by councillor Rosehart, the council receives report OPS 18-13, Heavy Trucks Restriction Bylaw, and that bylaw 4199 to amend bylaw 3701, being a bylaw to regulate traffic and the parking of motor vehicles in the town of Tilsenburg, be brought forward for council consideration.
Thank you very much, councillor Hayes. Council, you've had a chance to review this. This is really an extension of the paradigm material, the review from a delegation regarding Baldwin Street, and subsequent direction from council to staff to bring back further amendments that make the bylaw, give it really more teeth relative to the control and policing and signage as well. Councillor Hayes, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This question maybe to Mr. DeLeveque. Has there been any communication, discussion with southwest Oxford on this proposed bylaw? Because part of that is a boundary road when we go past the town limits.
Through the mayor to councillor Hayes.
Is that necessary?
The eastbound is actually the town side of Pressey Line, so we're actually all right.
So we don't have to worry about it.
We've already been in talks with southwest Oxford, and they're fine with us placing a sign on the other side as well.
Okay, thank you.
Point, further questions or comments? Just the only thing that I would have is, on the operational side, is when the signs would be, I mean, when would the signs be erected? The law doesn't take place until the signature is done, dated today, so...
That's correct. It was about two or three weeks before sign delivery and installation, so, in relatively short order.
Okay. Further questions, comments? All that question, all those in favour, posed, carried, confirming that later on the agenda, the bylaw confirming this will be read. Deputy Mayor, regarding placement of additional electrical vehicle charging stations in the downtown, or not just in the downtown, in Tilsenburg, excuse me.
I have one, I have that. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Adam. The council receives a report OPS 1814, Electrical Vehicles Charging Stations, and the council authorized staff to proceed with the installation of electric vehicle charging station in municipal parking lot 7A at the Tilsenburg Community Centre. And the council authorizes the costs associated with these electric vehicle charging stations, installations being incorporated into the LEDs, streetlight conversion project budget.
Thank you very much. Discussion for members of council, councillor Adam, then deputy mayor, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Through to Mr. DeLeveque. Just in regards to these charging stations, some of the other things that we talk about, infrastructure, we know the life spans on them, but is there, will there be any, well, there will be, but in terms of ongoing cost, do you have any idea from research or information you've received about when these things need to be, I don't know, updated, or I don't know much about them, but?
Through the mayor to councillor Adam, I would anticipate you'd likely be in a 10-year to 15-year lifecycle for these types of charging stations to be replaced, like other infrastructure.
And so, we don't really have a, we have some great information on the, that was presented to us a meeting or two ago, in regards to the parking lots. We don't really have any solid data on the types of demands, or what kind of vehicles people are driving at this time. Like, I would suggest that these aren't probably going to be used that often in town as of yet, but maybe I could be wrong. But do you have any reservations about putting in this many, without knowing that information, about what the type of demand we have in people in Tilsenburg?
Through the mayor to councillor Adam, the two stations, the EV charging stations are being supplied as part of the LED streetlight budget. So those, we're just trying to find a home for those two to install at this point, I don't, until perhaps we're successful with grant funding for additional locations in the future.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think I misreading then that we're installing up to seven or eight here, but, okay, so it's just the two that we're looking at, then?
Yeah, the attached was referencing Mr. Panchow's portion of EV charging under the report that you just referenced, that would be the preferred locations if and when that number of available stations, you know, were available. So the report tonight is Mr. DeLeveque and his department's prioritization of those, where in town gets the best value for the buck, really. And ultimately, it's the step along, it's the chicken and the egg. Well, if we need to supply the power, it's an attraction for people to come to the community. They won't, you know, people with those vehicles will bypass the community, and then it will grow, I won't say exponentially, but the presentation that was circulated, and that was also made at county council recently, is that once you get to, there's a trigger number where the growth and use of the, not just the purchase of the vehicles, but actually the use of the chargers will grow exponentially once it gets to a certain point. But you need them to even, kind of, like, continue.
Thanks for that clarification, no, thank you.
And that was deputy mayor, please.
Well, and I just want to make a couple of comments on this, and I know the resolution is about installing the hardware for this, but I want to follow up with a couple of things, because from what I'm understanding, some of the new homes have the plugs right in them, they're not hooked up yet, but at least they're there, because this is cutting-edge, it's coming. We were discussing just a short while ago, and wearing my Tilsburg Hydro hat here, we were at a conference, and they were talking about the Air Canada Centre having some 3,500 parking spots. And if people headed from Tilsburg to one of the 3,500 parking spots to watch an event, they'd have to recharge to come home. And do they have the power sources at that particular location to charge 3,500 cars? Because they've got to recharge to get back on the highway. And I think these are the challenges that we're going to have to come up with, with Tilsburg Hydro, to make sure that we do have the resources of electricity there to charge these cars, especially when there's a hockey tournament, or whatever might be going on at the community centre. And if we don't, if we don't install them, we're going to miss out on that tourism dollar, so I think that's important. But I do have one question, and maybe Mr. DeLeveque's not ready to answer this yet, it's probably very premature. But when will municipalities start charging revenue for the plugins, where they can get some of this money back for installing these stations?
I think it's extremely timely. It's the pertinent question that's not addressed, so I'm...
Yeah, through the mayor to deputy mayor. At this point, I'm not sure what the industry has planned for, the charging station industry has planned for charging. I do know that these are chargeable-ready with an add-on to it, to accept debit or credit cards, but at this point in time, I'm not sure when.
Okay, are you, see, that's, this is one thing to accept and have someone put something in, and I see Mr. Rush's hand up, and nowhere in the report is the reference, and it's actually a concern of Economic Development Advisory. No one's pumping out free gas when you pull up to the pump. Now, we're all, I hope, encouraged to find new and creative ways, and EV charging is a significant part of that, but I don't believe in the, this sector, we're anticipating giving out free energy. So, Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, that's quite correct, and we have, we have a, behind the clock tower, there is a charging station, and there's two plugs, if you will, to plug into vehicles. It's $2 an hour for each one to charge. So we are currently charging for electricity in Tilsburg, so.
Well, I would...
Now, the county gets the revenue for that, because that's a county, I believe, that's a county...
But I believe, I would suggest that the question is excellent. It's only in its infancy, the different levels of chargers, you know, based on their speed and the type of performance of the vehicle itself, will dictate potential different rates. I think we're going to need, I mean, it's not going to stop this today, and I don't intend to, I think this is encouraging, but I think we need to come up with a policy on our rates for using power at our assets. So I don't know if that needs to be amended, I would just think somewhere, there's going to be an obvious, what if someone's paying the power is going to come and say, we want council to give us some direction? So I would encourage that that is part of some discussion. Did I miss, I may have cut you off.
I don't worry.
Anything further on EV chargers? We'll call the question, all those in favour, posed, resolutions carried. I'm just going to go through a balance of an agenda here and come back to 13.7. Under unfinished business, there's a notice of an AGM, the shareholders of Tilsburg Hydro. Deputy Mayor, you have that, please?
Yes, I do. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Esseltine. The council receives a notice of the annual general meeting, annual meeting of shareholders of Tilsburg Hydro Incorporated, and the council calls a special council meeting for June 26, 2018, at 12:15 PM, in order that council may attend the AGM.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, council, you've heard the resolution, notification of date, all those in favour, posed, resolutions carried. Councillor Adam, can I ask you to proceed to 16.1 committee minutes?
Yes, sir. It's moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Barris, the council receives the development committee minutes dated January 16, 2018, the Heritage Beautification and Cemetery Advisory Committee Minutes dated May 3, 2018, the Accessibility Advisory Committee Minutes dated May 8, 2018, and the Cultural Advisory Committee Minutes dated May 9, 2018, as information.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Discussion, all those items, oh, councillor Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The cultural advisory committee meeting, I was just reporting in the minutes, it was one of the only things we met about this month, but the Christmas Fest Subcommittee, we went out for recruitment to find some members for that, and basically, it's coming back to the town through those minutes, and so I was just going to ask Mr. Cox if there was any, what was going to be done with that information within his department, if anything, or what some next steps were, and I'm sorry if I'm catching you off guard here, but...
Through you, Mayor Mulner. Yes, you have caught me off guard, and I'll be bringing some information back to council with respect to how my department might be able to respond to the decision of the committee.
Thanks, sorry.
Councillor Esseltine and councillor Hayes, please, hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to that item, that councillor Adam just commented on the Christmas Fest Subcommittee, and I know I saw some advertisements in the community update section in the newspaper asking for people to serve on that Subcommittee. Were there other, could I ask councillor Adam if there were other attempts, other ways that we were trying to recruit people to serve on that?
Please, councillor Adam, please?
Yes, there was, from what I understand, our staff liaison, it was placed in the newspaper several times, I think three times. Also, the two people that we did recruit that were interested were going to their personal friends or relatives, and seeing if there's any interest, as were other cultural advisor committee members. It was also Patty Phelps also let us know it was advertised on the Facebook page, and also the town website, and, yeah, there literally just wasn't too much interest, unfortunately. But those were the avenues that were utilized over the course of about two months, I'd say.
But there were two people that came forward out of that appeal?
One person was interested in the governance or committee work, and the other one was more interested in helping out, like, the events or the day of, and so we've kept those contacts in mind, moving forward with that information.
Thank you.
Councillor Hayes, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess that's something I'd like to bring up, we've got the Heritage and Beautification and Cemetery Committee Meeting here, and I guess, I see Mr. Hill is here, too, and I have some definite concerns on Sunday, when I went to the cemetery, I don't know whether anyone else has had concerns about the cemetery, but I know the grass has been growing very rapidly, but I was very disappointed in the condition of the cemetery. Has there been machine repairs, or lack of employments there, or, I guess I'm looking for maybe Mr. Cox or Mr. Hill? It was, I guess, I do frequent the cemetery, unfortunately, for the past seven years, on a regular basis, and Sunday, I was really disappointed, but I actually went home and got my weed eater, and I wasn't the only one I noticed at the cemetery were actually cutting weeds themselves, and it was just, I felt bad for not only my wife's plot, but the whole town of Tilsburg, and I guess I'd just like to express my concerns, and hopefully that could be improved.
Did you have any, I don't know if it's in those minutes, do you have any comments?
Through you, Mayor Mulner, the specific concern that councillor Hayes is raising is not in the minutes, because the meeting was ahead of the situation, but...
Oh, I realize that, but it just, when it came to my attention, we're talking about heritage and beautification.
Yeah, so we... Yeah. So, we certainly, as a staff team, have recognized that the challenges we faced in the last month in terms of keeping up with all of the work have shown in various places, and the cemetery is one of them. And we're committed to try and catch up over the next short period of time to deliver a cemetery that we can all be proud of.
And I guess if I have one further question, there's potted flowers out by the building. Are they for sale? Are they to be put around the cemetery? Or I don't, what the, maybe?
Through you, Mayor Mollner, we have an annual flower pot program, and the flowers have arrived, and they're going to be placed out to the folks that have purchased them.
So, that's part of our beautification program?
It's not part of the beautification program. It's part of a regular cemetery program to offer a basket program, a flower basket program. And so, they have arrived now from the flower shop, and we need to put them out at their destination.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding the committee reports circulated? Call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thanks very much. Now, we're going to return to an item on the agenda, 13.7.1. It's informational item. The resolution, actually, I'll just ask the deputy mayor, who has the resolution.
I'll read the resolution. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Esseltine. The council receives the water park slide. Update is information.
Discussions, or did Mr. Cox, preparing comment, says to do with the earlier game plan regarding the concerns and the engineering aspects. But council's receiving this information and not, this isn't a concern. This is about material information that just arrived. Is that correct, Mr. Calder?
As of Friday.
Okay. So, there are members of council, I mean, self-included, who had a chance to peruse it very briefly early today. And I'm going to suggest there's probably members here tonight that have not seen it at all. So, I'm going to ask you for the very high level summary, and then we'll have some discussion. But if the discussion, if there's not an expectation that we're going to resolve any options or opportunities in a very brief period of time, we'll look for an alternative timeframe to have the key discussion. Mr. Cox, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mollner. Just by way of verbal update to council, as you may recall, in the April 23 meeting, council approved that we proceed with rehabilitating the water slide tower with replacing the lower stair riser and repairing, as we were aware at the point, at that point, repairing the other stairs and the rest of the tower. We received late Friday verbal information and Saturday written information from the engineering team as they explored the rehabilitation more intensely. And essentially, the results of that evaluation are that both slide, both stairways and both landings, and perhaps even the tower pillars, need to be replaced before the slide can be made safe for use. At this point, the earliest possible that that could possibly happen, if everything goes perfectly and money is not an object, would be early August, that the material would be fabricated, ready to be repaired. And then, the water park would need to be shut down for the period of time that it took to install that slide tower. So, as of Friday afternoon, we stopped work on redeveloping the lower staircase, and we're prepared at this point to advise council that we expect that there is no possible way to have a slide ready for use this season. And we will come back to council with further information with respect to what we may be able to achieve for next season. Other things that we can, we are planning to implement as a business operation change is to look at adjusting our admission rates and to our operation hours and other ways of programming the space to provide good value, which already was there anyway, but to just encourage folks to come and use the water park this year. The actual pool repairs and filter repairs and everything else are on time and on schedule and on budget with respect to being ready to open July 1. But we will not be able to achieve a slide at all for July 1. And at this point, we're suggesting that it would not be good business to try and get a slide in place for, at all this season.
Do you have any comments? Hey, Councilor Adam, please. Councilor Adam, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Through to Mr. Cox. So, this council.
Sorry, that was an accident.
There was quite some discussion around the table when we had the different slide or options presented to council. And so, the information you gave here tonight, so, thank you. And I would think most people would agree that we don't want to go that route, given the characteristics of what you described. But what is the reality, then, moving forward? So, water park's opening July 1. And then, we had talked about some different options, such as taking the slide out, so it's not sitting there in its current condition. But you had referenced the cost of doing so, whereas we might have some savings at a future date once we replace the slide. So, I just wondered where you stood on that issue mainly, just on the slide itself.
Through you, Mayor Mollner. We expect that the most cost-effective approach at this point is to leave the slide where it is until it's removed and replaced as part of a replacement, rather than removed now and replaced at some future date. That is the most cost-effective approach. But we've also talked about how we can try and make sure that the slide doesn't look like it's in a state of decrepitude, even if it's touching up the paint and banners or whatever we need to do, so that folks don't feel like they're part of something that's falling apart when they're there. We need to decide how we're going to accomplish that and how we're going to do it in a way that is also cost-effective. But I appreciate councillor's question. We don't recommend removing the slide at this point. We're going to try and make sure that it doesn't look like it's falling apart while you're there.
And through the mayor, I certainly respect your opinion on that topic. But just like, I would like to know if you are aware, do you know the cost of removal? We're talking a few 10,000, tens of thousands of dollars. No, I have 30 in my head. I don't know why, but.
Through you, Mayor Mollner. I have not evaluated or tried to procure that, but the information we have from the experts we've been talking to are in the order of $60,000 or $70,000 because it's not, because of the disposal of it is, it's not, you can't just take it to a dump site. You need to have special disposal of the fiberglass in particular. The metal is recoverable, but the other pieces are, require some special disposal. So, it is fairly expensive. The cranes would need to be mobilized. You're talking about heavy-duty cranes to mobilize to take this apart, and it's more cost-effective to mobilize the crane to remove and replace, rather than to get the cranes in place just to remove. The bulk of the cost is the disposal and the machinery required, and doing the machinery twice doesn't seem to be cost-effective.
Thanks, Mr. Cox.
I, okay, Councilor Hayes, but I gotta say, it's different, like, what we have is an update, but no request for direction. And I don't really want to be going around in a circle, and I, so I'm going to just have a kick at this. But we're not speaking to anything, other than there's a resolution to receive his information. And we have staff commitment that they put a halt on the work because of, it didn't meet even council's expectations, going back to our April 23 meeting. So, sorry, Councilor Hayes.
That's okay. I guess I'm really quite upset about finding out this report now. I know we had hopes that maybe putting in the two sets of stairs, that we would get the water park open. And it's disappointing news to find out it is in that bad a shape. And I guess, too, I'm kind of caught between a rock and a hard spot. The shape it's in, do we even spend more money on the existing structures there? I think that's something we've got to decide, because sometimes you can spend good money after bad, and then we find out, like, the slide part and the frame of that has to be replaced. So, I'm just, I'm very disappointed. I was looking forward to having the park open, and I think we've got to have some more discussion and make the right decision to move forward, because I don't want to spend money and then find out later on that we should have replaced the whole thing. I think we've got to look at more options, too. Thank you.
Mayor, just quickly through to you, through to council, the park will be open. I just want to clarify for the public that the park will be open. As councillor Hayes says, it will not have that water slide feature. But as Mr. Cox said, he is looking at other options. And one of the things we did talk about at a previous meeting was additional inflatables or some other activities that could be taken place at that location. But again, I think to the mayor's point, that's something that we could report back on, once you've digested some of this information.
Excuse me. Okay, Councilor Rosehart, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I haven't, I haven't read this. Didn't even know it was on here, and I apologize. Just a question. Were we starting to repair the bottom part of the steps?
Just the direction that council gave was for the bottom set of stairs. There's a two-tiered stairs, and then another 90-degree up. So, it was only the bottom with a review of the top finger. I mean, council was totally aware with the direction that it was only the bottom riser. Now, continue. That was the direction on the 23rd of April that council unanimously concurred with. There's a lot of different discussion, a lot of ideas, but as it came down to it, that was the direction of council. So, continue.
Thank you. I understood that part of it. We were just going to do the bottom part. But before we started, would we not have gotten some kind of senses on whether the top, because I do remember the mayor saying, "Oh, we're going to do the bottom, and then they're going to tell us the top's no good." I guess I'm just asking, did we not get some kind of senses whether the top is going to be okay or not till now, till after we started on the bottom?
Through you, Mayor Mollner. And I appreciate councillor, the material was only circulated this afternoon for you to have a chance to review it. But in the chronology of events, you're absolutely right. The intent was to repair the lower staircase and really make sure that the upper staircase was able to be rehabilitated rather than replaced. And as we were, as the team was doing that, as they started to look at that work, they saw some areas that they had concern, and they called in the engineers to review it and make sure that it would be okay. And this is where we're at today, is that late last week, it was found that the extent of the work that would be required was so extensive that really the, both, the entire structure, the entire tire structure needs to be replaced.
So, when you say team, are you talking our people?
No.
Or are you talking to people that are fixing the slide?
We hired a certified slide mechanic company to do the rehabilitation. And as they started that work, they identified more and more areas of concern. They called in a structural engineer to come and verify their concerns. And the structural engineer's report we received verbally on Friday and in writing on Saturday.
And I guess I struggled. Did we not have an engineer come in and already do a, do a quote on whether it was, I'm struggling with this all of a sudden. I'm sorry. Did we not have an engineer come in and tell us that the slide was no good from the start? I'm trying to get my clearance.
No, that's not what's in the report. And the supplemental report of the 23rd is that there could be surface issues with the upper, that the lower absolutely needed to be done. And there were no guarantees, actually, on the apps, on the actual slide. The resolution on the meeting of the 23rd, moved by seconded by council, received the report, and they, actually, the staff proceed with water slide tower rehabilitation, including replacing the lower stair riser in order to have a safe and TSSA-certified water slide ready for the 2018 summer season. And that was a council option that wasn't really totally aligned with any of the staff required, or indicated option.
And just to follow up, and I guess maybe I'll just ask you this question. Did we not have somebody tell us that the slide was no good from the start? Who is the company that told us that, that we could not move forward and use it?
Through you, Mayor Mollner, we had a report from our slide mechanic, that they were, slide mechanic company from last year, that they recommended replacing all of the tower. We had that verified by Jade Plus engineers, and they also agreed with that. And then, we started looking into it further and thought that perhaps we could get away with just the lower slide mechanic, slower, lower slide replacement, but that turned out not to be the case. So, you are correct that we had messaging earlier on that the whole tower was compromised. We looked into it more and more and tried to get by with a less costly approach. And it turns out that we can't avoid that situation.
And just to follow up on that, who is "we"?
The town hired experts to give us this information, and we're providing the information that we've got from engineering through you to council. "we" is town staff plus expert advice.
And councillor Hayes, and I'm going to ask Mr. Calder to just make the comment.
Just one more question for clarification. I'm sorry. I didn't get home till four o'clock, and I guess this came out at two, so I really haven't had time to read it all. But I guess I stand to be corrected, but I know the last report I had in my head, yes, we knew we had to replace the bottom stairs and possibly maybe the second stairs, because we could spend up to $100,000. Am I, was that not our?
It's only two stairs.
We felt that if we didn't have to replace the upper staircase, we could accomplish the repairs we knew about for $70,000. If we needed to replace the upper staircase, it would be more than that.
About 100 or so. Yeah, that was my last recommendation. Thank you.
Hey, the resolution is information. There's been an operational commitment to stop because of new material evidence circulated tonight, but not, you know, let's respect council's not in a position, Mr., to make a serious analysis of the information. What are our options regarding direction to senior leadership, when the only resolution I have on the agenda is to receive his information?
Through you, Mayor to council, I think what you've heard is that staff isn't proceeding with the work as originally intended. Council wanted something else, and direction would be required on that front. We would like to come back with a report to talk about what we can do to enhance the visitor experience without the slide for this year. Following that, we need to come back with a longer-term plan, because I think we do not see value in piecemealing together a slide tower without really having an understanding of what that would cost, as opposed to possible full replacement as a longer-term solution. That takes some time. That takes some conversation with council, and that takes budget approval. But I felt that the understanding should be this evening, that that slide is not going to be repaired, nor is it going to be open. If council wants something other than that, then I think we need your direction. And when I say other than that, if you want it removed, that's a different conversation as well, that we weren't intending to do until we determine what the long-term solution would be.
Well, there's not a slide going in tomorrow, correct? And, you know, I was prepared at one point to call, you know, with privilege, a meeting later in the week. If this is something that isn't going to change and requires information, requires council the opportunity to review the material, all of us, because this is just arriving. Again, that's not a, that's a reality of timing. It's here and put on an agenda late because it's so important. But I also don't have everything that Mr. Calder just said as an option. So, I'm taking that we have a commitment from senior leadership that on the first meeting in June, the first meeting in June, there'll be a comprehensive report regarding operational options for the year, for the water park 2018. And that's subsequent to that, whether it's in the fall or the business plans, or, you know, that there needs to be consideration regarding the long-term replacement of the asset, which we are going to, someone would have been doing in 2018 business plan, even with the short-term remedial work that was approved on the 23rd of April. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor, council, that is correct. We cannot have information about the long-term solution to you in two weeks.
No, no, no. I wasn't asking for that.
So, that's why.
That mechanism isn't any different. That mechanism isn't any different, it's about the fact that that was always going to be fall work, leading into your twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen business plan and budget. This was based on a crappy situation that came to light late, and our primary concern is for the safety of the, primarily, the youth of the community. There are other questions about the sightliness and the salability of it, and it's still a water park, and those are the things I believe council anticipates seeing in the meeting of the first meeting in June.
Correct, we would, we would address not only additional features that we might be able to put in, but how to deal with that tower remaining in place to make it at least somewhat aesthetically, you know, appealing.
Or removed.
We'll give you an option.
I would make sure that, one of the great things we've been getting are options, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think we can give you an option in terms of price to remove it by then. Thank you. Sorry.
So further, Counselor Esseltine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so just with regard to leaving the tower there, we would have to take all the stairs off, right, because you can't have kids climbing on the stairs, and we would have to take the slide funnel thing off because that would look ridiculous if kids can't go down, so we're going to be left with sort of, like you have to get rid of those things that would be safety issues, so whether we can create something really creative out of what's left so that it looks good in the water park, that would be maybe something we could consider, but it can't look at all like a slide or like a climbing thing because those are safety issues.
In the report.
And we need to look at a creative communications program to put this out there before kids show up at the water park looking for the slide, so we need to have a way to deal with that.
Further, resolutions on the floor and along with some additional staff direction, all those in favor, opposed, resolutions carried, we're back on track, there are, oh, excuse me, I should be a little more, are there any notice of motions to be brought before council this evening? No resolutions, council did not sit in closed session, bylaws, Counselor Adam, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's been moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Barris, that bylaw four thousand one hundred eighty-three to authorize a municipal funding agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and bylaw four thousand one hundred ninety-nine to amend bylaw three thousand seven hundred and one, heavy trucks restriction be read for first, second, third, and final reading, and that the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal thereon too.
Thank you, Counselor Adam. Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Counselor Esseltine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Barris, that bylaw forty-two hundred to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on the twenty-eighth day of May two thousand eighteen be read for first, second, third, and final reading, and that the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal thereon too.
Thank you, Counselor Esseltine, confirmation bylaw, discussion, all those in favor, opposed, resolution is carried. Any items of public interest, Mr. Delevac, sir?
None at this time, thank you.
Thank, but recognizing the amount of work that's already being done, the surface asphalt, some of the other partnerships with the county, and Concession Street East is coming along, I know it's been busy, but I know we're out early, so thank you for your, you and your team for that. Counselor Rosehart, please.
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor Hayes.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Calder.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Cox.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Mr. Rushton.
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Counselor Stevenson, Counselor Esseltine.
I have an item tonight, I don't usually, but I do. Okay, so Saturday, June the second, is National Health and Fitness Day, and in the Lions Auditorium at the Tillsenberg Community Center, there are some activities happening, and one is a group fitness class starting at nine o'clock AM, and the second is a group yoga class at ten fifteen AM, and I'm going to assume that's all ages, is that correct, Mr. Cox? Okay, and it's the Lions Auditorium, so it's a huge room, so in Tillsenberg, we're joining a long list of communities across Canada, hosting events, encouraging residents to get active, and these classes will be offered free, and all you have to do is come ready for a workout. So again, that's Saturday, June the second, Lions Auditorium, Tillsenberg Community Center.
Excellent, thanks, Counselor Esseltine, Counselor Adam, please.
I don't have any events to report, Mayor, but I was going to share that there was two track, and we had Jaden King earlier in here receive a monthly volunteer award, and there was two track and field athletes from Glendale headed to the Ontario Regionals in Windsor this week, Friday and Saturday, there's Haley Cole, a hundred meter sprinter, she placed fourth at the recent Wassa competition at TD Waterhouse in London at University Western Ontario, and also, I'm not going to say his last name right, but Chizu Olguibo jumped a meter seventy about at my nose, and had the high jump and placed third, won a medal, and he'll be representing Glendale there, so I don't know if he'll be making it to Windsor, but good luck to them.
That's excellent, thanks for sharing that, and good luck to them. Deputy Mayor, please.
Nothing, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Nothing, thank you.
Just a couple of community reminders, the, first of all, the Banshell, its first major event will be taking place Friday, June the first, hosted by the Tillsenberg Kinsmen, and headlined by Bobby Wills, the Mudmen, Julie Haggerty, and the award winning Small Town Girls, just from outside of Tillsenberg here, tickets once again available at Chrissy's Corner Store, Home Hardware, Danbrook Automotive, or you can go to ticketscene.ca, so exciting opportunity there, it's leading into, because we'll be meeting next on the fourteenth of June, it's a special night Thursday because of a deferral from earlier in the week, and starting right on the fifteenth, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, returning again is the Tillsenberg Turtle Fest, and actually, that was the Shaw's Ice Cream Downtown Block Party, welcome Shaw's in a lot of ways to the community, but thank them for them, along with all the other sponsors and volunteers, who will make this again a tremendous event in our community. So that's the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, the block party is on the fifteenth, things to do for members of the family of all ages throughout the weekend. We'll look for a resolution to adjourn, I believe, Counselor Esseltine, you have that, please.
I do, moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Barris, that the council meeting of Monday, May the twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, be adjourned at eight twenty-two PM.
Thank you very much. Discussion, all those in favor?